I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public, which stands, one inch under God, in this one liberty and justice for all.
Call for a motion for the acceptance of the minutes of the September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen meeting.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Public forum? There is nobody for this evening. We will move on to this evening's presentations. We will hear from Nancy Amore and Amanda Reese about the senior class trip. And the students. Class advisors. Welcome back, everybody.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys again.
We're just getting that up.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
And now the advisors or class officers of twenty twenty.
Good evening. I'm Quinn Avery. Nice to see you guys again. I'm the class president of the class of twenty twenty, and today we will be proposing our revised class trip for you guys.
Hi, I'm Nicole. I'm the mascot. Okay. Um, okay. Sorry. Okay, students will stay on the Universal campus at one of the Universal group friendly resorts. The New Endless Summer Resort and Universal Cabana Bay Resort. The first day would be at Universal Studios Theme Park. That would, that's gonna be me and Quinn if we get to go because we'd be so happy. The second day, we'd go to Volcano Bay Water Park. That's the water park. Day three, we'd go to Universal Islands of Adventure. That's the park.
Okay, hi guys. I'm the class secretary. So, basically Nicole just went over what we're gonna be doing at the park, and as you can see, there's a lot to do. There will be three choices of parks for each day. So, the first day, you could either choose to go to the water park, or the Studio Theme Park, or the Islands of Adventure. So, if you go to the water park the first day, let's say, you can go to a different park the next day, or even on that same day, you can go to a different park. Each park has its own type of theme, and there's multiple rides you can go on and enjoy. So, the class will have their own choice with their own groups. The Islands of Adventure is actually really cool. I remember when I went to Universal, and I really enjoyed my time at all three parks. Every park is very unique, and each ride is very unique. So, Universal is really like a virtual reality kind of place. So, it's animated, and like when you're on a ride, you feel like you're there. So, I really think everyone will really enjoy. So, I'm gonna hand the mic off to Quinn, who will explain the trip in detail.
Okay, so with the revised policy, we ended up being able to provide three meals a day, and the pre-trip insurance for forty-one dollars, and there is a one chapron to ten student ratio, and we are under the cost of one thousand and fifty dollars. As you can see, overnight hotel security is included in trip costs from eleven PM to five AM. Professional liability insurance policy is provided through the travel agent. Pre-trip insurance provides students that are unable to attend the trip due to a medical emergency, sports event, or death in their family, a refund of monies paid. And there will be a travel guide with us for the duration of the trip.
I think that's it with this student's presentation. Are there any questions for us?
Thank you. Are the questions from the board? Jody.
You said that there was three meals a day. On the itinerary though, it says lunch and dinner on your own with one meal voucher for day one. Same with day two. Day three, it says lunch and dinner, same thing, one meal voucher, and then for day four, it does not say anything except for breakfast.
On the first page?
Yeah.
So, that day-to-day itinerary
Uh huh.
Came before the revised.
Okay.
On here, that's when we added the meals.
For the five vouchers?
Yes. So, they're gonna have three meals the first day, three meals the second day, three meals the third day, breakfast and lunch, and then they'll be home.
Okay, so.
So, the, the travel agents got to plan out like when each of these things is going on. This, so, look, he, he has the flights and everything on here.
Yep.
And the numbers of meals that you asked for. But that itinerary went with the original, just to give you an idea of what they would be doing during the day. So, the new, the meals are included. We had made sure that they were.
So, the contract that would be signed would say that there's three meals a day for each?
Yes, and, and it'll, it'll take.
Day coming home would be.
So, they have breakfast, and then we're gonna probably stay at the pool that day because we don't wanna like into the park and try to get kids back to the airport from the park. So, we're gonna stay at the pool that day, and we're gonna have a pizza lunch.
Okay, no, we're not at dinner because you're not getting back until late.
I think they'll be back by dinnertime.
No, and your flight doesn't come back. It says till eight thirteen PM.
So, we'll have to pay for them to have dinner. Or they'll have one meal on their own. It's one meal.
Anybody else want to be heard on this? Iris?
I'm just curious. The, um, the pricing is based on a minimum of fifty paying participants. So, if it is less than fifty, could you please apply to the superintendent what the cost would be? So, she can forward that information to us?
Sure. And we also just had a class vote again, and over seventy students said they were interested in going on the Florida trip.
But they do provide a schedule for if there are less than fifty, right?
Correct.
Okay, so you'll get that to the superintendent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody else? Mr. Burns?
Yes, Mrs. Amore and Ms. Reese, I just wanna say that this was certainly an arduous journey that we went through to get to this point. And I think we got to the right point through compromise and talking. But I just wanna congratulate you because I'm very excited the kids are gonna get to go on the trip. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to be heard on this issue? Lisa?
What happens if, if you don't have the fifty students? What happened? Have you calculated the costs?
Well, he gave us an estimation. It's not in writing, but he gave us an estimation. The trip, it would only go up, let's say if it was, I think he gave us like thirty to forty students, I think it would only go up ten to twenty dollars. And that's because, the reason why is in the past, it would go up so much more is because they had to cover the cost of the bus. And the only time they're using the buses is to go to the airport, and the airport fee is singular. You know, they each get an individual ticket. Do you understand what I'm saying?
No. So, the, so, when they're on the bus for thirteen hours and the entire trip is ran by the bus, you have to pay for the busing for the entire time, plus for the driver's salaries and all the insurances for that. So, when they're only taking the bus from school to the airport, and then from the airport home, and from the airport to the hotel, and from the hotel back, the bus price is minimal, and they don't have to pay twenty-four hours a day for the bus driver and the hotel for the bus driver. So, the bus cost is what drives that way up. So, if, if one person doesn't go on the trip, then we don't buy their airplane ticket, and we don't buy all their passes. The only thing that happens is the bus that they take from here to the airport has to get divided by forty kids instead of fifty kids.
Right.
So, the price doesn't escalate.
Everything else. Price isn't based on?
Everything else is individual cost.
Whether it's thirty kids, or fifty kids, or eighty kids.
Right, so the bus is what will go up, not the individual ticketing for the plane, or the individual ticketing for the tickets.
So, if only thirty kids go, it's still?
It's a minimal, it's a minimal increase.
Minimal increase.
Anybody else to be heard on this issue? Mr. Story?
I just wanna also thank the young ladies that came up the first time and spoke. It changed a few people's minds, and great job.
I think you had a, you had a hard mountain to climb, and with a lot of, and I wanna say to the policy committee of this board, thank you, because it was a tough journey to come to a, a reasonable and fair compromise of the board, to see that we, we met somewhere in the middle. We're not gonna, you know, it's a negotiation sometimes, and you don't always get to where you wanna be, but you end up in the middle. I'm happy to be able to say that the policy that we've adopted allows you to, to go, as long as you can raise the, the funds and, and meet, don't go above that minimum standard. So, that's been done. Yeoman's job to you and your class, and we'll be voting on this shortly if you wanna remain.
Thank you.
Does anybody wanna make a resolution, make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve this senior class trip as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Going once, twice? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Enjoy. We'll move on to reports and correspondence for this evening. For myself.
Vince, down at the, after the games, like they had a game on Friday night, and it was all weekend long, it was garbage there, outside the press box, and it was blowing around. Is there any way to make sure that we get that cleaned up after games, so that we don't have that issue going on?
Absolutely. After a game, I can make sure that the, the night cleaners head down there and just empty any trash.
Yeah, because on Sunday, it was.
Yeah, when it gets hot like this.
Disgusting, and blowing it all over the field.
Yep, it'll be taken care of.
Thank you. Anybody else have, uh, board members? Wayne?
So, if we could look into for the soccer field, for the lightbulb field, I should say. We need to do something about shutting down there. You know, there's no shed. The, the coaches are taking the equipment down, they're bringing it back. Our, our guys that line the fields have to continuously take down paint and sprayers and all that. We could find a shed for, you know, fifteen hundred dollars or so, put it down there, and to make everyone's life a little easier. In addition, I would like us to look into a scoreboard. I was at a, I was at Reinbeck last week, and they have one that just rolls on and off the field. You don't have to have, wires run everywhere, doesn't have to be stationary. I just think that, um.
Well, we have the electric out there.
That field deserve the same courtesy as the students that play on our football field.
And we have the electric out there already, so I mean, it's not, it's just a matter of looking, it's a matter of looking into another one.
Cost for both of them. I'd like us to, to act on those two things as soon as possible.
Okay. Iris?
Is there no scoreboard that's working?
No, there is a scoreboard that is old.
Is it working?
I guess.
Is the scoreboard working? Does anybody know, the one that exists?
Where?
There's no, there's no scoreboard at Lightbulb.
Where, where are we?
Lightbulb.
Oh, Lightbulb.
Oh, okay, sorry. I misunderstood.
No, no, Lightbulb.
Lightbulb, okay.
Oh, okay.
John?
Yeah, if I could just update everybody on the Hall of Fame. We will have our Hall of Fame ceremony this October nineteenth, which is a Saturday. We have three inductees this year. I'd also like to let the public know that there's a, and those three employees, or those three inductees, for the life of me, escape me right now. Frank Sluka, Coach Jack Carter, and Taylor Walsh. So, on the Saturday morning, in the, of the induction, we'll be having a breakfast at a Roma time from nine thirty to eleven. If you know any of those inductees and would like to stop by, tickets are twelve dollars for breakfast. And then at noon, the Hall of Fame ceremony will be held on the track and the football field, on the track by the football field. We also have the presenters coming. Some of them are Hall of Fame candidates or, or in the future. And we'd really like to see a large outpouring. I know a lot of people are very excited, not to shun the other two, but Coach Lance, Coach Jack Carter was here for many years, and a lot of people are excited about him going in. I'd also like to take this time, Mr. President, to remind the public that all year long, we accept nominations to the Hall of Fame. You only have to make them once. If you nominate someone, it doesn't necessarily mean that they'll get in. But this second year, we dropped off slightly from the first year, and there's, you know, if you just take a look in our gym, there's dozens of people that are Hall of Fame worthy. Somebody just has to nominate them. So, if you want to, you can look on the website and go to athletics, and there's Hall of Fame information, or call the athletic director's office if you need that. And next year, we look forward to, you know, having a bigger slate and improving still again. We've ordered the signs, we've ordered the plaques for the inductees, we've contacted all the inductees and the people that are presenting, and right now, everything's a go.
And that is a reminder to the public, this is a process, there is a process in place, there are bylaws in place, and we certainly, we appreciate the job that you do, and all the committee, Patty Steinhoff, and whoever else is on that, that Hall of Fame committee.
Shannon Pomeroy, myself, Kermit Moyer, and Max Mead.
Well, we, we thank you for the, the job that you do there. It's a, it's a very nice thing that you do, and it's great for the community, and it's great to recognize, you know, our history here in Allenville.
My apology for stumbling through those names.
That's all right. Anything else? Any, any other board members? If not, we'll move on. Would you introduce yourself?
I'm Adam, Adam Perry, and I'm representing the student council. So.
Welcome. Do you have anything for us tonight?
Yeah, I have a synopsis.
Can you get closer to the mic there?
Can you hear me now?
Too.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna run through like a couple of things that the student council is involved in, and things that are going around in the school. So, do I have to go up there, or just?
No, you can do it right from your chair.
Okay. First thing we have is October first is World Bully Prevention Day, and then October fourteenth to the eighteenth is Spirit Week, and we're gonna have things like Twin Day, or something along those lines. And then, that same Friday is the high school pep rally, and then, the next day, Saturday, is the high school, the high school's key club, Ostermans Walk, and then, that should be it until the next board meeting. So.
Thank you. We look forward to your reports every couple of weeks to keep us updated on the events. And welcome. We, we certainly appreciate your volunteer, and we know it's a busy year for you, and you have a lot going on, but we appreciate you coming and participating. That's it. We'll move on to Superintendent Lisa Wild.
So, a few things this evening. We touched upon at the last meeting, a resolution that the board will consider tonight on a capital project referendum. So, after we pass the resolutions, there'll be a referendum on December third, from eight AM to eight PM. And the work that was done on this referendum, and the choices that were made, were a direct result from the consideration the board took on the exit poll that emanated from the last vote. It, we'll have more detailed information rolling out here in the next few weeks. But the project is decreased by a third of what was presented last December. It's decreased about ten million dollars, and the total amount of the package will be nineteen million, nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So, the project is really a nuts and bolts project. The items that are gonna be included in the proposal include finishing off the roofs, various safety initiatives, replacement of windows and doors, HVAC systems, a lot of repointing of bricks on the outside of the building, the envelope of the building, to, to ensure that the infrastructure is protected and is safe. Some work on the parking lot, parts of the sidewalks that are failing, the replacement of those. We do have two program-focused areas, expanding the cafeteria in the elementary school, and expanding the library. Those are the two areas that really go beyond just infrastructure and nuts and bolts, and provide, will provide our students in the elementary school with more well-needed space. We'll be rolling out a PowerPoint presentation, we'll be clearing out all the information we had on the last capital project, so there's no confusion. All our new information will be going up. We'll be getting out to community groups and having same informational boards, type boards, and brochures going out. And in addition to that, instead of doing a video, or in, along with a video of some type, we're gonna be doing live tours through the building to show the public exactly what the work is. So, we'll have more dates. Those will prob, we'll probably do a couple in the evening, and then a couple on the weekend too. So, they're accessible. So, that's December third. More information to follow in a formal PowerPoint presentation that we will have up on, on our website. But I can say, on behalf, and the board can, you know, we really did listen to what we said, scale it back to nuts and bolts. We'll have some tax implications coming out to you also, but it's a, it's a considerably scaled back project. I also wanna share with you, this Thursday, our freshman class will be traveling to Deet Stadium. There's a group that works with us, it's called Ryan. It's a foundation founded by the Keldar family, and Ryan stands for Raising Your Awareness About Narcotics. All the school districts in Ulster County, all of the ninth grade students will be afforded the opportunity to travel to Deet Stadium for a rally. There is a speaker there, his name is Tony Hoffman, and he will be talking about his personal story of recovery. There will be awareness and prevention, information, and activities there for our students. The event goes from nine AM till twelve thirty PM. It is sponsored by the Keldars and the Ryan Foundation, along with Ulster County School Districts. So, it's really gonna be a great event.
There'll be a lot of law enforcement.
Yeah, law enforcement's been partnering with this. We have a committee in the county that's really working very hard to get information and conversations going about substance abuse. And I really wanna thank Randy Keldar and her family, you know, for sponsoring this and paying for the, you know, paying for the, the speakers. But it's very exciting. Dutchess County has done something like this, and it's just really nice to see Ulster follow part with that. So, we'll give you a report on what that looks like when we get back. And finally, I just wanna share with you that the policy manuals are done. Shocking, after so many years. But we received the manuals themselves. We're trying to work on a platform now. We can't just load it up to board docs. We're looking for a platform so that they can be searched when you click into them. So, we're, it's another software package we're, we're going to have to secure. But they will shortly be online, and we have our new manuals. There'll be a resolution, you know, accepting the new manuals, and the policy is probably at the next meeting. So, a lot of hard work from the policy committee over the years. It's a huge accomplishment. I just wanna, to thank everyone for their hard work, and that doesn't alleviate the additional work that's coming. We'll just be on a cycle now, a cycle in the recommendation process. Thank you, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Wild. We go on to Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Mister President, can I just say something here? I just, it was, it was just over a year ago that we were scrambling for coaches throughout the district in all three seasons, and the board asked the superintendent and the athletic director to put more emphasis on recruiting and filling those coaches, and I saw on the note that Mrs. Wild's put out that said that we're all full up on the winter coaches. So, I just wanna commend Mrs. Wild's and Mr. Moyer for putting more emphasis on that like we asked, and giving our, any kid in our district an opportunity that wants to participate in the sports, we offer to have a team. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Napoli.
Thank you. For tonight, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. We will move on to personnel resolutions for this evening. Under six point one, upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that Alan Tibbetts be appointed as a registered nurse assigned to accompany student two seven one zero seven on a school bus to and from school, not to exceed two and a half hours per day, five days per week, at a rate of thirty-seven oh six per hour work for nineteen twenty school year.
So, second.
Will the second a discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point two, Wellness Committee. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved the following individuals be approved to work on a wellness committee after school for the nineteen twenty school year, not to exceed ten hours' work at the rate listed indicated below. Move the list.
Second.
List has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Iris?
I just wanted to know, after the committee has their meetings, do we always get the minutes from that? You know, a report about what was going on at the meeting?
Yeah, I have to check. I'm pretty sure I share them, but I don't know if I load them into my report, or the superintendent loads them into her report. I have to go back and look.
I mean, I'm interested in seeing them. I think there are probably other board members also would be.
Yeah, we definitely make sure you get them.
Very good, thanks.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point three, winter coaches. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved the following coaches for winter be approved as indicated for nineteen twenty school year.
Move the list.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Six point four, upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that a point five FTE security attendant position be created and approved.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Six point five, Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Worker One. Upon a recommendation, superintendent of schools be resolved that Joseph Pennsylvania be appointed Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Worker One, at a contractual salary of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, Step Two, prorated effective September twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. This is a twelve-month civil service position, requires a six-month probationary period.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Vince, we have all his certifications?
Yes, I have them, and they should have been loaded into board docs.
Okay, just wanna make sure. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Seven point one.
Motion to move seven point one and seven point two?
Second.
They're moved and seconded under budget. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Under IEPs.
Mister President, move the list.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. There are thirty-five. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries unanimous. Under Construction Resolution nine point one.
Mister President, move nine point one, nine point two.
The.
Second.
Move, it's been moved and seconded under Construction for nine point one, nine point two. Seeker and proposition?
I'm sorry. I hate to be seconded.
Reverend Collins seconded it. Reverend Collins seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? I'll be doing a roll call on this vote.
Oh, this is, that's what I asked you, okay.
I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Trustee Burns?
Is a roll call vote on both votes?
Yes.
Yes.
For the motion as it stands, nine point one, nine point two. Trustee Story?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee?
Yes.
Collins? Ramirez?
Yes.
Iris?
Yes.
Jody?
Yes.
Geneva?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries nine, zero. Under ten point one.
Motion move ten point one, second.
Shared transportation, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Iris?
I'm just curious, Vince, could you just tell us quickly what shared transportation is, please?
I certainly can. So, last year, uh, the state education actually approved districts to, um, share transportation runs or piggyback with, with other districts. In the past, you were not able to do that unless both school districts owned their own buses. So, because we're contracted, if we wanted to share a run to another district or to another out-of-district placement with an, with another school, we would actually have to put out an RFP or a bid for that run and then the transportation contractor would be able to vote on it or bid on it. And then what would happen would then we would go through a whole contract. But now with the new law, we have to prove and in, in the resolution, it actually proves it, that we will be saving money by sharing a run to an out-of-the-district placement with another district. So, in this case, there's a, um, there are students that go out of the district and us and Fallsburg have students that go there. And so, we'll actually be saving close, more than fifty percent of the cost of the runoff we were doing it ourselves by sharing it with another school district.
Does this apply, um, only to special ed runs or, or are there other applications for this?
Most of the time, it would only be in special ed runs or out-of-the-district runs. We might be able to do it with maybe a career in tech, you know, students that might be going to a BOSI's. But when students are in the district, other, other school districts are not running through our district. You know, they're, they're driving within their own district.
So, there really is no other reason?
Probably not, but like I said, but it might be if, if they're going to a BOSI's, like a career in tech and we were driving through another district and we could maybe pick up their students on the way, then we could do that. But it's kinda hard for us where we go, you know, to actually do it.
I'm curious to know how you find out where, what other schools are going places? I mean, is it coming, the information coming from the bus companies or?
So, so what, what we do is, um, at the be, at the end of the summer before the school year starts, we, each school district fills out a survey of where they have students placed and how many students they have placed there. And then the special education directors and the business officials, we have a conversation, how can we make this work? And then if we get somebody new who comes into the district, we, we ask around, hey, do you have anybody going to school X? And if they do, and if they're on the way and we can pick them up or they can pick us up, then we, then we try to make it happen as a shared transportation run.
So, it's a cooperative effort, really?
That's exactly what it is.
School districts.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? No one? Motion carries. Next meeting date is October eighth. Is there anything anybody wants on the agenda for the October eighth meeting?
Are you gonna announce the workshop? The workshop.
Mark your calendars for October second, board members. We have our board retreat on October second. And then the next official meeting of the board that will meet in public is on October eighth. Nothing for the agenda for the October eighth meeting? I will then end.
Geneva?
Geneva?
Uh, can we just get an update on the pre-k bathroom situation?
Oh, I could do that now, actually, if that's okay with you.
Good.
So, um, after the meeting, it was referred back to Mr. Napoli and Mrs. I, the principal, and, um, Mr. Caratini. And they did some research and they found some inserts that can be placed, um, inside the toilet seat and flipped down when, um, students, um, pre-k students need to use, or other students need to use the bathroom. So, those are or, ordered and they'll be installed. So, that should.
And we're also moving the toilet paper dispenser.
And they're moving the toilet paper dispenser, so, um, and they have contacted that parent and, uh, she's, you know, happy. So, I'm glad it got brought to our attention. Just a reminder, if anybody has, um, any concerns, to definitely reach out to the, your principals and, and let them know what's going on so, you know, we can, you know, move forward with issues like that.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor?